This is a December 10, 2024 meeting of the Woodstock Community Unit School District 200. Please welcome the Plugged and Odegeds, there's a flag in the passenger for the time. The Plugged and Odegeds to the flag of the United States of America. And his republic for which stands, formation of God, individual with religion and history. Call please.
Dr. Bidwell? Dr. Ferris?
President.
Mr. Gilmore?
Here.
Mr. Hedley?
Here.
Mr. Homa?
Here.
Mr. Misselli?
Here.
Mr. Parisi?
Here.
First item on our agenda is our public hearing. This is a public hearing, a life safety amendment to the Woodstock High School external track. I will take comment in public stat and board comments in that order. At this point, I will declare the public hearing to be opened. And ask if any more members wish to, or any members of the public wish to address the board on the issue of the health life safety amendment to Woodstock High School's external track. Any members of the public wish to address the board with that? Okay, number one on the stat count, so there are any stat comments regarding the public life safety amendment? Any more comments?
Yes, I'd like to say it's long overdue.
Any other comments? Just for clarity, this is doing a lot of things to use life safety funds for the purpose of track. It's not a bid or anything at this point. Now, if it's a state, you wrote from the state, want to build a new track at Woodstock High School where you qualify safety funds to all states here, it's the first time for this hospital. Any other board comments? Okay, then at this point, I will declare the public hearing to be closed. Next, we'll move on to our consent agenda. There's consent agenda, in addition to the consent agenda, there is an addendum on your desk. Do any members wish to have any higher consent agenda formal consideration? Okay, take a moment, please, to review the consent agenda, if you haven't done so, and if there is any suggestion motion, I'd like to blow our materials.
Move to a reading of the proof of consent agenda that's printed in the board agenda, including the routine personnel matters of death on date of December 10, 2024.
Number two, Mr. Parisi, second, second, second message by Mr. Hedley. Call call please.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes.
Mr. Hedley?
Yes.
Dr. Ferris?
Yes.
Dr. Bidwell?
Yes.
Mr. Misselli?
Yes.
Mr. Homa?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Okay, then next item on our agenda, here's our review. I ran through the board, wrapping up a number about standing after the next staff members. That is, in honor of our Woodstock High School boys' country team. They qualified for class two A, they are a third team, to the fourth year row, is a great accomplishment. We were highlighted by Sowrysha, meaning all state taking their place. To honor our country war, and then our staff, our mayor, and both lines on your side. Okay, and, okay, there's a suggested motion on page 120 of our materials.
Move to introduce the following resolution. Whereas the Board of Education of Woodstock Community Unit School District 200 wishes to recognize the contribution of these individuals, whereas District 200 has benefited as a result of these accomplishments. Now therefore be a result that the Board of Education of Woodstock Community Unit School District hereby bestows special recognition and a significative achievement on behalf of the citizens of the district.
Number two, Mr. Parisi, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, by Mr. Hedley, roll call please.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes.
Mr. Hedley?
Yes.
Mr. Homa?
Yes.
Mr. Misselli?
Yes.
Dr. Ferris?
Yes.
Dr. Bidwell?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
All right, we're going to review the name, computer certificate, we'll say it here for a picture. First, in my honor, our state football team, our country team. Bring them up one by one, members of the team, first, we'll start with Adam Bailey.
That funny.
Andrew King. Evan Graham. Lloyd Hedges. Brooke Edgar. Violet Purrier. Jaffa Rock. Alvi Shat, Allstate, ninth place in state. Jayson Troop. All right, need to get right in the middle here for a big group picture. I'd like to congratulate both of you for still here, have a great season as well. Jeff, you're full of love, we'll get out, take off if you want.
Yeah, well, I can talk a lot, yeah, second. Tonight, I'm here recognizing two of our meeting and three staff members. First, I'd like to introduce you to Mr. Phil Flye. He's one of our dedicated Target Associates, who brings Creedside with his positive attitude and laid-back personality. His commitment to students is evident as he willingly dives into instruction and is always student-focused. Mr. Phil itself is making connections with students while creating a positive atmosphere. A true team player, he collaborates and contributes significantly to our special education team. No matter the task, he gives us the bottom gear and let me help him in. Mr. Phil is a problem solver and his true natural strength is ability to identify the needs of our students. The teachers he supports trust him even in the most stressful situations. Because he puts students first and is such a tremendous supportive person. Students love working with Mr. Phil and it's clear how much he loves working with them too. They work very hard to meet his high expectations and take pride in their work and their working with us. He embodies all that makes Creedside such a wonderful place for all students to learn. A true asset to Creedside, especially the Target classroom community. Thanking Mr. Phil for all your positive support and commitment to students. At this time, I'd like to have the former students, Grace and Angelo, come on up and share their thoughts about what makes Mr. Phil so good to be seen. All right, thank you. Next, I'd like to introduce you to, not introduce you to, Mrs. Heron. At Creedside, Mrs. Heron, where many have, she's a literacy coach, a sixth grade literacy teacher, a dedicated member of our Evansite team, a key contributor to our instructional leadership team. Each of these roles play a different part in many ways, she helps Creedside establish a place for students and staff to learn and grow every day. Her commitment goes beyond being a lasting impression on both her students and the Creedside community. Mrs. Heron is not just an exceptional literacy teacher and coach. She's a master at building relationships and fostering an environment where all students know their value in her perspective. She uses those same strengths to empower staff and help them continue to grow in their work to help more learners excel. Mrs. Heron's caring demeanor and student-centered approach creates an inclusive environment where students not only feel welcome, but also comfortable taking risks and consistent in giving their best effort ever. She opens her classroom during lunch, inviting students to connect and feel at home because she knows how powerful the connection can be to student success and strong community. In response to student interest, Mrs. Heron also started a jersey club and embroidery club for students during lunch, doing it again in a fun way, Black Center creates. As our literacy coach, Mrs. Heron utilizes her strengths to guide our teachers and be a great model for amazing instruction. In all she does at Creedside, she provides support and a sense of community and belonging that helps students and staff thrive. Thank you, Mrs. Heron, for putting our students first while pushing them to the end of the system. With that being said, I'd like to have one of her former students come up, Merica, to share a little bit about the ways Mrs. Heron went with us.
I'm here to make a little bit of a comment to smash my head in the carpet and I would like to finish my last one. I was struck by these two of the book, today I read a story of a video, a mother and father. I think these are the ones that were out of the way with the Sarah class that exactly why I gave, they should Sarah find their own family. TJ Green, from a shy brother, can afford to work professionally and confident and have a home. For so much difficulty, Chris Heron was the brightest agent that has shaped me to what I am today. I know Sarah is a patient, she's a patient, she's amazing here. They, they, they can say that the order of the family and leader in the family.
All right, one more, over the hour tonight, Allstate, Rockford, Northwood, State, Alvi Shat. All right, in just a couple minutes, we're going to start on our, the most important part of our meeting. For those of you who are here primarily for the recognition, this is a good time for you to maybe take the lead or decide on either, so walk in and stay in the public meeting, so you walk in and stay, see what's going on, but we're going to take a couple minutes for those who don't wish to stay, uh, just to get by off, so.
Just came over to say hi real quick.
Good to see you.
Give me the quick short, short, but we're down in Crystal Lake area now, bought a hangar a couple years ago, and working for, just got a new job actually this summer. It's like, we basically, we go up a sports stadium. And.
Called Sports Reference.
Um, are you a sports fan?
Very much so.
What sports?
I play college baseball.
Baseball, okay, so, like Baseball Reference, is a website you might have visited. That's, that's one of ours.
Is that right?
Yeah. Well, brand new to it, but, so I can't take credit for any of it yet.
We'll go further with you and ball behind you. And I'm not going to say it, I'm.
Thank you, Mr. Hedley, how are you good? How are you doing?
Yeah.
That's awesome.
Okay, at this time, we're going to move into our communications. Communication, the topic, community members and district employees who express a point of view on this debate issue. Sign up sheet for the public, identify name, address, phone number, name of organization, representative, any, and a brief description of the topic we address. Comments are going to run under three minutes. And according to Board Policy 2.0230, and our other board calendar, by Board Policy 2.0230. At this point, all of the board for public comments, do we have any, anyone sign up?
No.
Okay. Is there any person in the public who wishes to address the board at this time? Okay, are there any stat comments? Any more comments? Okay, then we'll move on. Moving on to our superintendent report.
All right, we're a couple two weeks here before we start a winter break, exciting time of year for our students, our staff, our families. It's a great time of year to see the performance of four students last night, as a combined band farward performance at Woodstock High School. Last weekend, we had a magical performance at North. Woodstock High School magical performance in the next two weekends here in town. So it's a great time if you want to see any of our students performing on our performance. Also, we sent our reminder for our family, our staff, when it's like a winter weather looks good, I'm going through the ten day, but just in case we get the first two full of the events, we'll produce snow days, followed by the next three of your mobile learning days. And we also have to do a ninety minute late start, if that gives us enough time to have the roads and parking lots clear, ready, come first school day, so, celebration and all that's available, looks like, hopefully we'll be using it when we're ready to, in case.
All right, thank you for the superintendent report. Then next, item on our agenda, here's the moderator's report.
So I'm really happy tonight to be here to share with you an update on our dual language program and simply the seal of others, see what name our students earn. It's kind of an exciting year this year because we are actually celebrating twenty years of dual language, so believe it or not, we started twenty years ago, in two thousand and four, with two sections of dual language at Mary Ann and Selma School, when we started that first grade. That group of students graduated from Woodstock High School in two thousand and sixteen. Since that twenty years, the past twenty years, we now have forty-four percent of our students in the district participate in dual language. So, two thousand six hundred and ninety students of the sixty-two hundred students participate in dual language, and we have the program starting in pre-k now, all the way through high school. Mary Andrews is a school that has been recognized as an international Spanish champion by the government of Spain. We, this was a really exciting thing for me, we have six former graduates, so six students that grew up in Woodstock, went through our dual language program, and graduated, went on to college, and are now back with us teaching in our dual language program. So that's a great accomplishment, something we're very proud of. And two of those teachers are actually from that first graduating class. We had many, many, many students participate in some of our teaching programs, so we've sent students to Spain, we've sent them to Costa Rica, Ecuador, and so that's been a wonderful experience for our students. We, and we have lots of visitors that come to the district dual language program. So we have, have had some from California. Next semester, we're going to have Indianapolis School District, Maryland School District is coming, Texas has come, so we have lots of visitors that come to look at our dual language program and follow their program off of ours. And we now have ninety-three dual language teachers, so that's amazing that we have that many teachers that are teaching in our program, and about half of those teachers are teaching, are Spanish teachers. And so that's what it means, it's celebrating that many people to teach the program, but it's, they're, they're a great mix of people that we have supporting our students. So we had huge celebrations, it's just a bunch of different pictures from our family night that we had on November seventh. We probably had five, six hundred people that showed up, it was an amazing night, we had mariachi, we had, we had actually a folkloric dance group, we were there, so the group of teachers and associates that get together and do folkloric dance, so they were there presenting. We had Papagaro, which is a couple of our teachers that are band members in that band, they were there. We had tawly, tapos, and churros, we just have wonderful food for the people, and we had workshops, workshops for kids, workshops for families, and we also invited a lot of our former teachers that had grown up with us through the program and had retired, and they came back to the night too, so it was a really great night. And we had Karen Demon and Cheryl Gero did short keynote, just talking about multilingualism with families and their respected dual language persons across the country, so they were here, and they kind of have helped us develop our program over the last twelve years. So it was a really great night. So, just to give you a little bit of data, as, I know Dr. Mom had shared some data in some past board meetings, recent board meetings, but this is specific to our Hispanic population, and these are dual language, I did go to St. Paul, I'm here too, but these are surrounding middle schools that have dual language programs, and looking at their data as far as their education, which are on the IAR, Creedside and Northwood have very high sixty-two percent, fifty-seven percent, and you can see there how the Spanics are performing, and those other districts, the state of Illinois is twenty-nine percent. So, you know, we're like thirty percent higher achievement, meaning seeing that Illinois doesn't have great in literacy for our Spanish students. So, I think that's a wonderful testament to the teacher administration and that belief of by literacy and really growing, you know, supporting multiculturalism all the way from the beginning. So I wanted to talk a little bit about the Illinois State Seal of by Literacy, because this is really something, when I have meetings with families in kindergarten, and I'm talking to families about, believe it or not, about eleven full years, this is going to be really important to you, because the state, since two thousand and sixteen, has been awarding the Illinois State Seal of by Literacy. You have to demonstrate high levels of proficiency in English and other languages to get the Illinois State Seal of by Literacy. It is put on your diploma, there's a seal that's put on your diploma, and then there's also, it's the only statement that's put on your transcript. But since this has started in two thousand and sixteen, we've had seven hundred and fifty students that have received this seal, and last year, ninety-three percent of the dual language students received this seal. And so what this means for students is that it's really college credit, because if you, if you go to school in the state of Illinois, go to a public university, they have to award some type of credit, and that's leveled up to universities, regardless of how much they offer, but actually, this is a really great site that I'm going to be sharing with parents this year, when I have my meeting with them for the ninth grade parents. But it shows all the university, it's a document that really shows all the universities in Illinois, and it shows how many credits each of those universities get, so this is a great document where you tend to go. But it's all, we have to really about sixteen credits you can get, you have that Seal of by Literacy, so that's a wonderful thing for students when they're going on to college. And then, I think, one of the things that I'm most excited about, I actually, in two thousand and four, this year, we started dual language, and so, I was actually ESL teacher here at Woodstock High School, so that was really before we had any kind of promoting globalism of by literacy, and our Hispanic graduation rate was sixty-four percent, and that had that year two thousand and four, and this last year, ninety-six percent of them, so it's a huge increase of weird events, globalism, multiculturalism, and the state has this big graduation rate, so as compared to the eight-five percent. Any questions?
Any questions, any other questions or comments? Yeah, the results speak for themselves, I mean, they're, they're pretty amazing, you know, twice, a percentage of literacy is twice what it is for the state average, which is, which is amazing. There was, did the eighty-twenty program, how's that comparing to the other fifty-fifth program in terms of, of literacy and so forth?
So I think, you know, with their, that program that wants a theme, it does get a little bit more advanced in the Spanish language arts, you know, the Spanish, they're more proficient in Spanish going into it, you know, once they get to middle school, they all meld together, they do have a little bit higher degrees in Spanish, but we are seeing that the English is, is about the same, there's not really a difference, but that's always a smaller of those students who do compare it to the large group, because in that group of grade level, they have one, a section of like twenty-five kids, so it's very small. It's very, so a lot, you know, people are really choosing that they want their kids to start out learning, ninety percent of their names Spanish as well. But we see, I would say the big difference is there's a little bit higher proficiency in Spanish. But again, to have ninety-three percent of our kids obtaining that Seal of by Literacy, that's really, you know, really great when kids look at going on to college, doing that college career.
Any other question or comments?
It'd be interesting to see where life people study, one of these kids now will graduate ninety-three percent of that. ninety-three percent, a thousand percent, what they're doing afterwards.
Yeah.
If you, any plans of getting that information or data?
Well, we, we collect some of that through our, through our high schools. And I just have anecdotally, actually I have a parent who, she was part of, she was the parent of a student in that first graduating class. And she came back to me because I remember many years having conversations or meetings with her about, she was thinking about pulling her kid from dual language. And then, but they stayed it forward and they ran it all through high school. And so she sent me an email a couple of years ago and said, I just want you to know what my kids are doing. One is a nurse and one is, her son actually is like a construction foreman. So they both use their Spanish all the time. So we're so glad that we have this program because both of my children are using that, you know. And I hear that effort that from an equal anecdotal, you know, kind of, so that's great.
You know, the piece to it, John, is, is the brain-based research and learning two languages in the early years, I remember we all had that at the, at the same level, but we can, we can try and see if we can do something career-wise.
I mean, we're, we're trying to, it's, I have a hundred percent, certainly it's happened with positive factors, just kind of there.
Good funny story, we remember just a week or last week, a teacher come up and tell me, she was down, she was kind of seeing Annie and with a friend and everyone behind her started a conversation with someone from a foreign country who was telling somebody who moved to Woodstock for our dual language program. And it was just, uh, it was just kind of weird getting in and heard like you moved to the middle of the audience, they're like, absolutely. And they went right in, um, you know, just little ankles on the patio all the time. And I just want to say, watching for that too, you know, the program for twenty years, that's what's a cut, but one of the big pieces of that and I think it's been the mainstay that we're keying. I mean, she felt such a huge part of that. I'm sure I really appreciate all the work.
Thank you very much. Thanks for all your hard work on dual language and everything else. Oh, yeah, thank you so much. Okay, we'll move into the business part. We have one finish business. The next item on our agenda is the approval of the resolution approving the twenty-twenty-four tax funding.
Okay, it's my pleasure to come back to you again with our lobby for your approval. We met last November, our last, our last meeting in November, and we reviewed a public hearing as far as what we were planning for, from a lobby perspective. So what I'd like to do is just kind of go over some of the key points with you again, see if you've got any questions. And then, of course, well, the resolution, our motion to approve this. So a couple of things to keep in mind, the total EAV is estimated, and you have to remember it's an estimate at this point, is estimated to increase ten point five-three percent from about one point one eight billion to one point three billion for us. Again, the valuation is estimated by the McCamry Twenty Access and Walkless and Modified based on historical estimates. The actual amounts won't be finalized until spring. The actual valuation could be more or less, but typically based on historical experience, it's been fairly close. Our new property for this lobby total is about eleven point one million. Under the Property Tax Extension Limitation Law formula, District Two Hundred is limited by either five percent or CPI as of January first, twenty twenty-four. CPI was three point four percent. So we are limited, we have a limit of three point four percent. So we can't really ask for more than that unless it covers our new property. So last year's total extension for taxes was sixty-eight point eight million. This year's, including the PTL limit, the district will levy or ask for seventy-one point four million. This reflects a three point seven nine increase in taxes levied over the last year, but the reason for that is because we, we assess that that three point four percent of the additional pieces is on top of it based on the new property that we've got as well. So that gives us a little bit more. The other key point that we need to keep in mind with this levy, and we'll have an item after this, is that we've got our large debt service payment that we'll have coming due with this levy year. And we are looking to abate fourteen point four million of that. So our total debt service payment would be twenty-two point four eight, actually twenty-two point five million. We're going to abate fourteen point five of that. So given these factors, our, our tax rate is actually going to go down to about twenty-five cents from last year. That is, that is if we approve the abatement. Any questions on that?
Any questions regarding the resolution approving the twenty-twenty-four tax funding? Any comments? All right, comments, it's a suggestion motion, update one hundred and twenty-three of our
Move to wait for reading out and approve the resolution authorizing final tax levy for the year twenty twenty-four.
Second.
By Dr. Bidwell, seconded by Mr. Parisi, roll call please.
Dr. Bidwell?
Yes.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes.
Dr. Ferris?
Yes.
Mr. Homa?
Yes.
Mr. Healy?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Next item is the consideration of a resolution abating a portion of the tax year two-four levy for the year twenty twenty-four to pay debt service on general obligation capital appreciation school building bond series two thousand and sixteen of community unit district number two hundred, McCannick, Illinois.
Just what you were just talking about, if we don't, if we pay this, our tax rate would have gone up considerably. So like saving and making money over the last couple of years, this keeps our tax rate going down, even though we're going to have a slight increase in the lobby.
And any questions or comments regarding the resolution abating a portion of the tax? It's not just a suggestion motion, update one hundred and thirty-seven of our materials.
Move to wait for reading out, sorry, no, no, please. Move to wait for reading out and approve the resolution transferring funds to the debt service fund and abating a portion of the tax levy for the year twenty twenty-four to pay the debt service on the series two thousand and six B general obligation capital appreciation school building bonds of community unit district number two hundred, Miss Henry, Illinois, County, Illinois.
And a motion for, by Mr. Heather Dureo, second.
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Bidwell. Roll call please.
Mr. Healy?
Yes.
Dr. Bidwell?
Yes.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes.
Mr. Misselli?
Yes.
Mr. Homa?
Yes.
Dr. Ferris?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Next item is the approval of budget development parameters and assumptions for the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six budget.
Okay, this item is presented on an annual basis and we'll actually start working on the budget for the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six school year in the next couple of weeks. So what this does is it kind of gives us a projection as far as what we can anticipate for parameters that we'll use to develop that budget. So it's got some items in there. Obviously, balanced budget, yes, with the exception of some of the plan and fund balance reductions that we just talked about for the debt service. What we expect the EAV to increase, and again, that's kind of a, you know, it's, it's projecting and anticipating what we expect to be, again, consumer price index, this would be what we've got for this year. Collection rate for taxes, we typically run about ninety-nine percent. Student enrollment, again, just kind of an estimate. Evidence-based funding, same thing, expecting a slight increase on that or projecting a slight increase. And, and any of our categorical aid and the dollar equivalent of this year's taxes, which would be, you know, straight across. And changes in the premium for health insurance, again, these are all strictly projections and they are subject to change, which is the very last thing, but parameters and assumptions will change. So it's, it's, we're looking out almost eighteen months to at least start working on our budget, but it just kind of shows that we're, what we're looking at. And if you see anything unusual or you'd like to factor into that. Questions or comments?
Any comments about the budget parameters? That is, it's a just motion, update one hundred and forty-five of our materials.
Move to approve the budget development parameters and assumptions for the use in the preparation of the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six extended budget.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Perry, seconded by Mr. Parisi, roll call please.
Mr. Healy?
Yes.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes.
Mr. Misselli?
Yes.
Mr. Homa?
Yes.
Dr. Ferris?
Yes.
Dr. Bidwell?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
And the next item is our approval of life safety amendment for paving repairs for Woodstock High School external road track.
This one in hearing earlier tonight, this is simply across with other members of the state, we'd like to use the life, the life safety help money to replace the track. After that, just to approve it, we come back and we go through the process and develop. So this doesn't commit you to anything other than to add to state allows to use that money. And the track, we had the track examined by the Arab Tech, an company in bad shape and being repaired, um, from the can.
The use of top life safety funds has to be something that strictly is a direct benefit to students. So that's why we're interested that this would be a logical amendment to our flexibility.
What is proposed hybrid?
Hopefully, if you pass, and you know, my biggest thing here is, I don't want to get stuff with it in North where, so we're pushing it now, so we hope, we're aggressive. We hope to have something to do in January needed.
Yes.
And that you were building in the spring?
No, what we're going to do is, I actually talked about, I talked about today, um, graduated on the nineteenth, we, state's twenty-third, he thinks we can ride north the track for those three days prepared for state. So the goal will be on the twentieth, Monday, twentieth, they carry out the step process. August first is our goal. We don't have a whole football game September fifth, so as we'll do when we're there, if we need to, that is the goal.
Well, they're replacing like all the runways and now.
Yeah, I mean, we, we got kind of like the detailed, Paul meeting with Coach and now to get all that, and all that, yeah.
I'd like to take a look at that.
And we can put it in the meeting for sure. Okay, are there any other questions or comments regarding the life safety amendment? That is, it's a just put motion, update one hundred and forty-seven of our materials.
Move to approve the attached resolution in for, excuse me, move to approve the attached resolution in for required documentation tied to the authorizing use of health life safety funds for the repair of the external road track at Woodstock High School.
Second. A motion by Mr. Parisi, seconded by Mr. Sally. Roll call please.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes.
Mr. Misselli?
Yes.
Dr. Ferris?
Yes.
Dr. Bidwell?
Yes.
Mr. Healy?
Yes.
Mr. Homa?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Okay, the last item for new business is the approval of change order for Woodstock High School. We're going to keep fighting on this one. Nothing easy. Comment turned down our proposal, we met the requirements except by the IRS for the tax rate and the state, but they believe the grid could take back the amount of energy that we were giving. So they, they, they approved, they called it, yeah, but the process of a much smaller scale project is being approved, the new cost of two point four-six million, so significantly less. The first one is return of residence, basically, slightly, but so whatever, nine years for complete, uh, return of residence and everything for the next nine to twenty, let me say, after
When I first read this, I was really surprised. I think that somebody dropped the ball there, and I think it could be our, our who was ultimately hired, because in my thinking, we should have known how much comment would accept before we ever put this out of bid. So we could have figured out the bid that was, I don't know, it's double what comments said they'd accept. So I can't understand why we were the assumption that that would be accepted.
Well, we meant with, because the requirement of the, we give you the rule that you have to understand, right, Paul, or should we can end right, but if we understood, the frameworks were, we couldn't create more energy total than, than we, than we used.
We, yes.
From the beginning, so that's what we built, up until that house, we were going to try to capture everything we could, meaning there were data to use more than others, there were factors to really say that, the law allows that, the state, I mean, everything we read allows that. And then obviously, when it comes in, they said, that's all true, that's allowed, we're not in your situation, you're not implementing grid. I had to very agree, I have a complex place on this. It's not really easy to deal with if you grow that anxious. But I said, hey, how do we know this until this process? And they said, we won't until you approve here. And we knew we were on the grid. And also, we met, and the other part of that is, there are other things that are closely for us that impacted this. So, you know, if we've gone to them a year and a half ahead of time and said, what could we have? They very likely, when I said, well, you could try a big one, because it kind of, they run a line between that and when we get approved. So I mean, more than anything here, I, I wouldn't have things like, oh, I see, the way it went down, but part of the comment is moving forward because everything else is taken into consideration with what was approved prior to the court.
Right, well, the, the reason that sits so poorly with me is, we have all these bidders out there that are bidding for something that is not even a keynote. It's a lot of work to put somebody, a whole bunch of people do a lot of work.
A lot of people do. If not, you're going to be out of the resound, it's a big tree.
But I, well, it's for our benefit, it's not for the people that did that, it's not for the loss, it's not for the benefit. I would like to never see us do something like this again, and, and, you know, the, you know. All those little bidders come through and spend that amount of time.
Well, we're coming again, because they, 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 they need to pull your need too. That's how I understood it, that it, again, there wasn't, there wasn't way, you know, down until we actually got the final, you know, to re-approve and we got it through and they saw what had come along. But I agree, I mean, I hate the, the, the company here that's doing half of this. I mean, everyone here, you know, is all, had a tough time, for sure. I agree with you.
Yeah, well, but at least they got something, they need some, they're going to be profitable. You know.
Yeah.
You guys, technical was correct, I mean, the way it was explained to us by comment is it's a process. And same with, I mean, we've gone through it with two different vendors and neither of them, you know, were aware of it until we got to that point in time where all the engineering had been completed and submitted to comment. So there was no, there was no indication that we couldn't do that. And I think, like Dr. Mo said, there's stuff in the pipeline we're not even aware of that you can't tell if people out there and look great.
You know, the other factor that they hear is, they didn't go out in the area, they're paying for that. They've all got a project. So I don't, you know, I mean, if it was as easy as just calling comment, I would have possibly done it too, right? Because, I mean, every company we dealt with, it does something similar, this is a state in Illinois. So they've gone through that process with comment, I don't know if, now, again, you know, we're down the line there in North, I don't know if that, that company's going to play or not, as far as the review. And maybe they should know all that, I don't know. But, I mean, yeah, everyone that did that, I would think we're going to say not much.
Yeah, I can just, I mean, if I, you know, I'm doing the house side, I know exactly what it's about. I'll let you tell me what it's about.
I'm not happy with, with creative, I mean, the, the, you know, we've got a board with diverse comments, but I've spent on this, it comes, maybe a half of it is disappointing to hear.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
What's, what's our, what's our bidding rules going this, like this large chain order, like, do we need to go, do we need to reset the project?
No, actually, we, we talked with our attorneys and they assured us that, given the circumstances, we were okay to continue on with our current, with the current bidder or the current contractor. Because you're right, we did, we needed to check on that, you're right.
Yeah, it just, that means it's a huge, it's a big chain order, but I feel comfortable going with after we went through the rigorous bidding process and dollars, basically started all of approving a bid or a project or chain with the current contract that, that is dead on this one, yeah.
Right, we did talk to Hodges and we were assured that because of the, the, the place and the process that we were with this and the fact that it's the engineering and all the technical work that had been done, that we were okay to continue on with our current
Any else? So here's the concern that I got from this, our original bid was twenty-five hundred dollars, twenty-five hundred dollars. We awarded it at twenty fifty, because it's my understanding that twenty-five hundred was what the need was. So we awarded it twenty fifty because we were sure that it's going to be sufficient to meet our, to meet our needs. This is now reducing it to nine, less than half of that. And I'm concerned that, and it says in the notes that, that it will not address all of the energy needs of Woodstock High School, although it will result in a significant reduction in energy costs. Is there a system that can be designed that will address all of that? I mean, are we blocked for this time?
Yes, we're not going to, we're having to prove, that's exactly what happened. Comment will only approve for this time.[1749.87]
It is, it's been very frustrating and it's, it's been difficult. But one of the issues is this net metering concept where although you may try and design something that addresses 100% of your power needs, it doesn't, it possibly addresses more than what you need at certain times. And you're sending that to the grid and comment said, no, we cannot handle it. So if we, they told us that we need to design a system that does not involve net metering. So essentially, we don't send anything back to the grid and we use everything that, um, is produced.
And I kind of feel like I order a truck and I'm getting a, and I'm getting a sedan. You already got a half truck, I mean, that's, that's what happened here, absolutely, you're getting, we're getting half of what we originally wanted. That's all, again, you don't have to do this, it's all your choice. If you don't want the change order, you don't have to approve it, this is all we need to approve because that, it just, I feel like that.
So, I just, I feel like maybe I'm getting some of the stuff mixed up. But I remember when we did this bidding issue, that there was a system difference that the plan we went with was using. And part of the issue was the amount that we were receiving that, but we got some feedback from other bidders that that was frustrating. It felt like they were bidding against something that wasn't written out the same way. Which makes me think about what Jake is saying too, like, do we need to go back and rebuild this? Because there was kind of contention around the way it was presented anyway. I don't know, but I just remember there being some concerns about that and the way that, was it all talk that we went with? That they, um, that they presented it and it was approved, so I, I don't, I don't know what you guys think.
I, I, I know, I really would like to see a project come to fruition, but in all fairness, I think I got beside with Jake, I think this should be your bid. I know that you guys don't want to hear this, but it's not fair. And it's a totally different system. That's all I can.
Yeah, I, I mean, I'm just, the whole process has been frustrating. I don't, I don't know that I feel like I have enough information to, to decide to go forward with the way it is now at this point.
Okay, so we're, unless there's other kind of theories, then right now, it's been, sort of, you can't work out, but go ahead, it's a total. It's standing on the bottom, it's just a motion, somebody can propose another motion, somebody can propose motion table, or somebody can come up with something else altogether. And, and propose it as a motion, um, direction is necessarily, except the moment like for that, but. Is there any way of motion to, is there, first of all, is there any further discussion on this matter, did we have anything to say?
I'd like to see it go forward, something, but it's not.
Wait, like, just, we're not getting any bigger than this, at, at, in this spot. Um, now, if the big process is considering that, that, of the board, whatever, this is the biggest, I mean, comment isn't improving anything bigger than this, but we'll build it, it is not, for sure.
I agree with this frustration, but I don't think we should stop this because of this question. We, that's, that's, that's how the process works. We did everything, presented the environment correct, we did. Was there a misunderstanding along with, yes. In terms of the energy, one thing's important, you know, sustainability is to reduce the energy consumption also. We can get that number down and get almost twice the same, but look at the L E P Y, we're running through all of it. It doesn't break down, as one, for example, which means another is on, works right now as well. So I'm not worried about us getting to the point of sustainability with energy. To me, one that is square one doesn't set well with me. And so I'm going to be strong opposition to what I'm hearing from a couple of board members here. I'm going to oppose the motion at some point.
Can I ask you, so what do you think about the bidding thing though? Because we bid out, what we asked like to, to admit zero already, and that's not what we got from the first bid. And we're still using them, and that issue is that we weren't.
And I don't want that, I'm not saying that I agree with that one. But everybody had the same playing field, it wasn't like we misled one company over another company at all, that didn't happen. Every company was on the same playing field toward the bidding process, of which then we as a board, with the advice of consent of our administration, said this was the best way to go and we had a ring. Nothing's changed that way, what changed was comment from that can tell us. So I don't want to go back to square one, I think that's taking two steps back from only one, right? To me, I just pray at this point to do that. So I'm in strong favor of moving forward with this motion, I'll present it in this word at that point, the conversation is over.
Here, here's my argument, right? I'm not confident that this is the best price for that system. We now are relying on a contractor that we bid on different specification. Not only come back and say, this is how much we'll do this system for, how do we not know? Or how do we know that there's another company out there that's going to say, for this system, we'll do it for 300, 400,000 dollars plus, I don't know that. And I, I, I gotta, I gotta look for the district's specifications when it comes to money and finances and I, I just think, to me, in my mind, I don't think it's there.
I have a more than.
I just don't think it's there to award to a company that bid on something completely different. It's a different, they paid based on, I think the system was bid per kilowatt. So we were looking at, when we were looking at all the different bids, they were telling us how much the system was going to cost based on the amount of kilowatts produced. So I just don't, I, I, I can't swear.
You know, you know this has been, same on your money, right? So this is the kind of cost of district by doing this. It's, it's true.
It's estimated, it's estimated correct at this point. It's estimated correct. I, I don't feel comfortable with the.
All right.
Any further discussion? Any motion?
Move to approve the change order for installation of a totally tankable tank system at Woodstock High School for the total of 2,222,323 dollars.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Hevery, seconded by Mr. Parisi. Roll call, please.
Mr. Hedley?
Yes.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes.
Mr. Homa?
No.
Mr. Misselli?
No.
Dr. Bidwell?
No.
Dr. Ferris?
No.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes. Your motion fails three to four. So, um, that's it at this point. Do you want to ask the administration to redid the project, project, do you want to, roll call, please? All right?
I'd like to do it immediately. I know it's work, I'm sorry, but I truly feel it's what I need to do.
I don't, I, we can, if somebody wants to make one of those.
I can do that.
Anyway, does that, does that agree that we should get a rebid?
Do we need a motion on that?
No, we don't need that, we're just directing the department to get to this. Okay, so we are. That's it for our new business. Next item is our committee reports, have any committee met, do I have any committee report from that meeting? And it being our committee reports, well, next item is to move into closed session. We're going to go into closed session for the reasons stated, um. So, move, you want one?
Uh, yeah, sure.
Move to go into closed session for the purposes of discussing the following, student disciplinary cases, litigation when an action has affecting, uh, or a behavior particular public body is in files as pending court or ministerial, you know, or when a public body finds that their action is probable or imminent. In the head, imminent. Uh, consideration of executive session minutes made to be available to the public and consideration of the executive session audio recordings to be destroyed.
Second.
And motion by Mr. Parisi, and Mr. Homa, seconded by Mr. Parisi. Roll call, please.
Mr. Homa?
Yes.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes.
Dr. Bidwell?
Yes.
Mr. Misselli?
Yes.
Mr. Hedley?
Yes.
Dr. Ferris?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Okay, we're in closed session, we're going to have that room back over there, um, we're going to lie in closed session, we're going to.
Okay, Josh. Here you go. I'll need it on for the.
Do you know I was in charge of the recording device for all the two.
Oh, you're not.
I was for all two.
Oh, you were.
Before.
Oh, yeah, I know.